Good evening and welcome to the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, November 13th, 2018. At this time can we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we will have the invocation by Chris Grigson from the Valley Christian Center, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
God in heaven, we thank you for this time that we can come together. And Lord, I pray that there would be peace on this meeting. I pray for wisdom for our council and our citizens. Father, I pray that you would just bless this meeting, help it to be productive, pray for those that are in harm's way tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have two presentations. The first one is a proclamation declaring Saturday, November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Day in the City of Series. So I have a proclamation. I think Dowie is going to accept this. There you are. Okay, I'll read this first. Proclamation, Small Business Saturday in the City of Series. Whereas the City of Series, California celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7 percent of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 65.9 percent of the net new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas small businesses employ 47.5 percent of the employees in the private sector and in the United States, and whereas 90 percent of the consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has had a positive impact on their community, whereas 90, excuse me, 89 percent of consumers who are aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas 73 percent of the consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently-owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family, and whereas the most reported reason for consumers aware of the day to shop and dine at small independently-owned businesses was to support their community, 64 percent said, and, excuse me, independently-owned businesses was to support their community, 64 percent. And whereas the City of Series supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday, now therefore I, Chris Viera, Mayor of the City of Series, do hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018, as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. The next presentation we have is Certificates of Appreciation for the Participants of the City's Halloween Trunk or Treat Event.
Good evening, Mayor Viera and city council members. What happens when you have over 28 community-driven booths giving out candy and toys to youth participants, 100-plus volunteers, and 1,500 to 2,000 kids dressed in costumes haunting downtown Series? Question, a once spectacular event. This was our first trunk-or-treat, and it sounds like downtown Series will be haunted next year again with this great event after a great success this year. Tonight, our city council presentation, we are here. Up on our screen are pictures right now of the event. Like I said, we had over 1,500, 2,000 kids attend. It was wrapped around the community center and back, so about two blocks along the line to get into the event. And basically, the line went that way till about 7:30 that night. And tonight, we wanted to give thanks to our local community, organizations, and businesses who've worked with city staff to organize and provide a safe, fun, Halloween event to the residents of Series. As being a new member of the community, I was very impressed by the community's involvement for the first-time event. And before we introduce our local community organizations and businesses who volunteered and participated in the event, I would like to thank our staff who planned the event, including Cambria Pollinger, Crystal Aguilar, Angela Mendoza, and our program staff. And a special thanks to our Public Works Department for closing down the streets and providing event support. Now, I'd like to introduce our Recreation Coordinator, Crystal Aguilar, who was our event co-chair. Crystal?
Thank you, Matt. Now, we'll be presenting those organizations and community members who helped make our event so great. Exit Realty Consultants, Embroidery Plus, Harvest Presbyterian Church, Flawless Hair Salon, Series Persephone Guild, Series Women's Club, Club Scout Series PAC 132, Donna Lambert from Save Mart, Series Youth Baseball, State Farm, Meyer CPR and First Aid, Series Chamber of Commerce, Diana Schmidt, Fiesta Auto Insurance, Series Adult School, Motherlode Mineral Society. We also had the California Fish and Wildlife, Elite Family Systems, Justin May, and Central Valley Saints. And then also, big thanks for those who were able to donate candy. We had the Employees Activities Committee, Lions Club, Series Police Association, and a lot of other community members and staff. Thank you.
Bared out the room.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make a quick statement. I'm Cambria Pollinger. I wanted everyone to put it on the books that we're having our annual 31st, actually, Christmas Festival, December 1st, at Smyrna Park, so please join us for the activities and parade. Thank you very much.
Next, we will move to Citizens Communication to Counsel on Matters Not Included on the Agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this point, I do have two speaker cards. The first one is Lee Brandt.
Good evening, council. My name is Lee Brandt, and I live on Haley Aloha Way here in Series. First, I want to start off by thanking Ken for all his services over the years. He's now officially a lame duck.
No, we still get one more meeting out of him.
Well, yeah, I know, but he's still a lame duck.
That hasn't changed.
Yeah. Some things don't ever change. But anyway, we've been gone for quite a while, almost two months, and we just got back from an 8,000-mile driving trip to the east coast and back. And people asked me if I was glad to come back home. My answer is no. The only reason I'm here is for most of the people. We came home to a very loud music coming from a house about six houses down from where I live, and it was very disturbing. I talked to my neighbors, who were great, by the way, and they said it would do no good to call PD because PD will not respond. I called dispatch, and 45 minutes later, after my second call, an officer showed up and the music was turned down. Now, this was during the middle of the day. This was 2:00 in the afternoon. And I know that there's an ordinance when it gets disturbing to other people when it goes way beyond. But anyway, 45 minutes later, after the second call, an officer showed up and music was turned down. I called the dispatcher back and thanked her for her work and to please tell the officer thank you also, because it was handled. But the thing of it is, is the perception from my neighbors is, why call PD? They're not going to do anything about it. You know, and that was kind of disturbing to me, and that's part of the reason that I had to write everything down, because otherwise I'd forget. And I really don't want to call Series my home anymore, because I would not let my home become as cluttered and as dirty as Series is. On our trip, we noticed how uncluttered most of the states were. Some actually had crews picking up garbage and litter alongside the freeways. And when we came home, out of the mountains, on Highway 58, and emerged on Highway 99 here in California, there was so much litter, it really caught our eye. And all the way home, here to exit 222, there was litter, some places a lot, some places not so much. We take the exit, and what do we see? Nothing but tons of litter. And I mean, it was ridiculous. You can't tell me that you do not see it. Look at the southbound on-ramp to the Whitmore Park, going underneath 99, heading towards Turlock, and if you look close, you'll see the Halloween sign in the bushes. It's orange, and you can't miss it if you're really looking for it. Something needs to be done. I do not have all the answers. I know public safety and public works are doing their best. Perhaps if we shift our sights on getting our city cleaned up and put in order, it will help bring in more businesses. We need to start promoting Series Pride or Series Strong. Public employees cannot do it all alone. They need help from the public and businesses that are already there. Now, I understand that the majority of the litter that we saw coming down 99, that's the state's problem, you know? But the state now has their tax, you know, their 12% tax, and, you know, we not only have the 12% road tax, but we, in our county, we have Measure L. I don't know if any of that can be diverted to help pick up the litter or anything, but I mean, it's horrible. It really is. Take the exit at Whitmore. You take the exit at Whitmore, and you go underneath the freeway, and, good grief, there's a lot of stuff underneath there. You know, all I know, and I know that nothing can be done about it tonight or any of that, but in the future, it would be nice to have something done. Thank you. I see, I'm done.
Hello, Dwayne Thompson, 1197 Alondra Drive. I just wanted to say that, you know, I wanted to thank the council for the efforts that you put out. You know, your spouse will get on you for not taking the trash out far more than they'll ever thank you for the times that you do. So I wanted to thank you guys for that. Ken, I wanted to thank you in particular for all your efforts in putting the community before your personal efforts, or not efforts, but desires. It's nice to see that in a politician these days, you know, the community put before your own. So thank you for that, and I wish you well in your future endeavors. So thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
All right, I don't have any more speaker cards, so at this time, is there anyone else who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item?
Dave Pratt of Series. You know, we do a highway cleanup once a month, and the next day, it's already starting to get dirty again. It's really hard getting a handle on that and getting ahead of it. Anyways, you know, a long time ago, you were talking about getting the traffic control system going in Series. Where are we standing on that?
What do you mean by traffic control system?
When the traffic gets to a certain point, that you had a, were able to adjust the lights, the traffic lights accordingly? You know, the thing going down Whitmore here at the Series High School is getting as bad as Mitchell Road down by Hatch. It seems like when one light changes, the next one turns red, and sometimes the traffic, if they're not paying attention, sticks out in the middle of the lanes. It wouldn't be, it's not too bad if you've got decent spacing between the lights, but when they're, when you've got half blocks or short blocks, and you've got four or five lights, and they just keep turning, the traffic stays backed up forever. The other thing that I've mentioned before was the carts. Now, I'm starting to see electric shopping carts in the canals now. Trying to figure out how that got in there, and seeing as they were over by, close to the walkways where the fence was, try to figure out how they got it where it was. Sooner the carts are getting out of hand, too. There was one time, rode by Mitchell Road and looking over the edges, there was about 20 or 30 shopping carts down the side of the hills. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Viera, city council members. My name is Olga Casoneda, and I'm with the Series Library at 2250 Magnolia Street. And I am here because I would like to remind each of you and residents of the Series community that the Series Library exists to serve its residents through services, information, and programs. And we provide a wealth of resources, free resources. As far as computers, we provide computer access, Wi-Fi access. We provide a scanner, fax service, and information. We provide information in person, by phone, by email, and over the internet, we provide a variety of e-resources. You can download ebooks, audiobooks, movies, music, et cetera. And as far as programs, we offer programs for children, infants, teens, and adults as well. Every month, we provide a calendar of events. All programs are free and available and open to each resident of the community. And all of our services are possible thanks to the 1/8% sales tax that each one of us pays. So I would like to invite each of you to take advantage of the services. Please visit, call us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gene Akeley, Series. To start out with, this is a new year, and things are going to be a lot different. For the people that helped me, I want to thank Diane, Tom, Toby, and a lot of other people that helped me along the way in the last three or four months. Along with that, I'd like to congratulate Linda Rhino on her incumbent win in the new District Two, and also Chance Connet on his new position as city council member in District One. Along with Linda Rhino, I believe Chance Connet will be an asset to the council in the following four years. And finally, those in the city council and those in the audience will get a chance to finally see Chance Connet at a city council meeting. I would like to let those on the city council know that although they have taken a serious position as a city council member and making decisions for those who have elected them, that there are times that being a council member, it should also be fun. Sometimes things seem to be a little bit too serious, and sometimes they should be, but other times, they shouldn't be, in my opinion. I have noticed in the last three years, from my own experience running for a position on the city council, that during the election time period, many of those running for a city council seat tend to gain different attitudes and display very noticeable demeanors, even going to the extent of signing their names and going against election rules. Not a very good or pleasant atmosphere. I am not sure the reasons for those individuals who want or are elected to a city council member are. Are they the exposure to the citizens of Series and having a heightened status in the community? Or maybe the stipend one gets each month? Maybe the health care benefit package? Hopefully, not the telephone they receive. I would hope that all the reasons mentioned are not the reasons to want to obtain an elected position as a City, a Series City Council member. Let those who do present themselves on the city council continue to always put focus on putting the citizens first and what they want and need. Never lose sight or waver from why the citizens of Series have given you your positions. The citizens of Series always come first. Make the community of Series and each citizen and their neighborhoods a place of peace, comfort, repose, good health, and safety, always without question. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. We have no appointments to boards and commissions this evening. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the consent calendar items or the public hearing or new business item? I would like to declare conflict of interest on the item number nine, public hearing. The applicant has been a client of mine in the last 12 months, so I will recuse myself from that and step down and turn it over to Vice Mayor Klein when we get to that item. Anyone else have a conflict? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. At this time, is there anyone on the council that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like a consent calendar item pulled for further discussion? Okay. Yes, Mr. Akeley?
Does that mean the resolution?
That means any of the consent calendar items. If you'd like further discussion on them, you can let me know, and then I'll pull that up, and you can ask your questions. It's not the public hearing items or the new business item. It's only the consent calendar. Which item is it that you have questions about, and I can tell you?
The one that has to do with the concert?
With the what?
The TOT tax.
Oh, the concert? Number six? Yeah, that would be a consent calendar. So you would like that item pulled for further discussion?
Number six.
Number six? Okay. Is there anyone else who would like an item pulled other than item six? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction on the other items.
Vote for approval of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8.
Second. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number six, Resolution Number 2018-121, approving a budget amendment for the concerts in the park. Mr. Akeley, you want to come forward and ask your question? We'll do our best to answer.
I'll try to do the best I can to explain what I read. If I'm understanding, there's some money that needs to be put forward towards continuing this next year. Supposedly, was it $16,000 that they have, or they're asking for $4,000 from another funding?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
No, that's actually incorrect. Let me explain the items. The item relatively simple is Concerts in the Park has been a longstanding event in this community. During the budget cuts, the funding allocated to the Concerts in the Park was significantly reduced. We relied on fundraisings to help fund that activity. The fundraising in the last couple of years has fallen short, so this item simply moves $4,000 from the TOT allocation that the council approved with the current budget to fund the concerts in the park for the coming year, because we need to allocate money before the concerts to be able to hire the entertainment for the concert series, and that needs to happen now, prior to the event happening next summer.
Could that $4,000 be put towards something that's of greater value or interest?
That's the council's priority decision. That's why I was bringing it forward to the council. There's two city council members who are on the Concerts in the Park Committee. They recommended from that committee to have this conversation, and this is up to the council to make that decision.
What could that $4,000 go to besides the...
There's a $20,000 allocation in the general fund budget towards TOT, and that program was dedicated by the council to allocate $20,000 for this fiscal year for grants and activity program to be administered by the Parks Department that is currently in development. We brought coming back to council after the first of the year. It's the council allocated. This is the money that they've allocated. It's their decision on where to move it.
The $4,000?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, and if I may interject, the $20,000 from the TOT tax is over and above what we've had for the previous years because we increased the TOT tax, and that this council decided to take that money and help to do some stuff to promote. So with $4,000 to go into Concerts in the Park, there's $16,000 left in for the promoting of, you know, over and above what we've gotten in previous years. Am I correct?
With the increase to the TOT that happened in 2015, there's additional revenues that are generated by the TOT. Council's direction last year was to allocate a certain amount of those funds toward a special use. That special use was setting aside $20,000. So this action would take that $20,000 and parse $4,000 towards a specific use.
Right.
And it was not the full amount?
Correct. And that's what I was alluding to.
And just for clarification, the TOT tax is the transit occupancy tax, which is the hotel tax. So this isn't tax that residents are paying, it's people that use the hotel.
Right.
And so a portion was, like I said, allocated for special events.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for direction.
Move to adopt Resolution 2018-121.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocset.
Yes.
Councilmember Lane.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, we have no unfinished business, so that moves us to the public hearing. At this time, I'll turn it over to Vice Mayor Klein.
So with that, item number nine, public hearing to consider proposal for the Whitmore Ranch specific plan, pre-zoning, and annexation to guide development of 94 acres, including certification of environmental impact report under the SEQA. So, Mr. Westbrook.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Vice Mayor Klein, and council members.
Thank you, council, Vice Mayor and council members. Item before you this evening is the Whitmore Ranch specific plan. Certification of the environmental impact report goes along with that. In just a moment, I'll introduce Matt Gerken, who works with AECOM. He's the one that's been helping the city get, kind of, get through this process with the creation of the specific plan and the environmental impact report. Just wanted to make note of a couple of things that we received over the weekend and today. There were some correspondence letters from Stella Cokely and Patricia Cousins in opposition of the project. We also received a letter from the school district late this afternoon. I believe that a school district representative is here this evening, and they can kind of touch on their letter in a little bit. This project's been... This project's been going on for quite some time, started kind of in 2016 to this process where we're at today. For the council's perspective, as you know, we adopted the general plan in May of this year. The specific plan was kind of envisioned at that time. So all of the land uses that were adopted in the general plan match perfectly with what is shown in the specific plan. So that's why we're not requesting any type of general plan amendment to go along with this specific plan effort this evening. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to introduce Matt Gurken. He's going to go through his PowerPoint presentation and then we will be available to answer questions at the end. Thank you, Tom. Vice Mayor Klein, members of the council, thanks for taking time for a short presentation. I think most of you are familiar with this specific plan. So I'm going to breeze through this pretty quickly, but obviously we're here to go into more detail on anything that you would like to explore. The Whitmore Ranch specific plan is in the southeastern portion of the city's planning area, shown on this slide in the yellow hatching, south of Whitmore Avenue. As Tom mentioned, the specific plan's land use designations are the same as those contemplated in your general plan for this plan area, shown on this slide. The specific plan objectives are shown before you here and they help to formulate the specific plan as well as guide the environmental review process. The objectives having to do with mix of housing types, distinct character, and several that have to do with pedestrian, improving pedestrian and bicycle safety in the area, connecting to the schools in the area and connecting homes and schools. The land use array is shown here. We're assuming up to 441 dwelling units of different housing types could be developed within this plan area in the future, along with the two school sites and parks and open space land. This slide is an illustrative concept, one way that the specific plan area could build out that would be consistent with the land use designations. As Tom mentioned, the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, requires the city to consider impacts, look at feasible mitigation measures, look at a reasonable range of alternatives prior to making a discretionary decision on projects such as this. This is not to recommend denial or approval of the project, it's more of a disclosure requirement, and so that's what we have done. Noticing the fact that we were going to prepare an environmental impact report, putting out a draft EIR for public review and input, responding to all comments in a final EIR, all comments received on the draft, making typographical revisions to the EIR, and finally tonight, the portion of the environmental review process is your consideration of certification of the EIR and then adoption of the specific plan itself. In the environmental impact report, EIR, we looked at all the different topic areas shown on this slide, it was a full scope of analysis. The EIR has different findings, starting with significant and unavoidable impacts. Those are those that are significant environmental effects that cannot be mitigated with feasible mitigation measures. So we have those in relation to ag resources, noise, and a range of cumulative effects as shown on this slide. Next is a category, mitigated impacts. These are environmental impacts that could be significant, but the plan and the EIR includes mitigation to avoid or reduce these types of impacts to a less than significant level. And then finally, the largest number of impacts that we found in the EIR are those that are less than significant even without mitigation, not requiring mitigation. The EIR, as I mentioned, also looks at alternatives that could reduce or avoid environmental effects. In the EIR, we look at three, as listed on the right side of this slide, a no project alternative that contemplates land uses continuing in the future. Alternative two, a site, a plant alternative that looks to reduce effects related to transportation, noise, and greenhouse gas emissions. And then finally, number three is an alternative that looks to save a couple oak trees that are within the specific plan area. The EIR has findings related to each of those alternatives demonstrating that the preferred alternative is superior to those alternatives. The public review draft EIR went out for 45 days of review this summer. We've received both written comments and we also had a public meeting, public workshop to receive additional verbal comments and we provided responses to each one of those comments in the final EIR. The final EIR also includes typographical revisions to the EIR and mitigation monitoring and reporting program. It explains, has some updates in response to some input from CalRecycle, for example, but none of the changes affect the conclusions of the draft EIR. So, finally, as mentioned previously, the action for you tonight is to consider certification of the environmental impact report and then approval of the project based on the resolutions before you. For your information, we also had a hearing before the Planning Commission, which recommended certification, environmental document, approval of the specific plan. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Is anybody on council having a question?
444 buildout, how far is that in the future? 20 years?
Are you a great guesser? I'm an okay guesser.
I'm a terrible guesser.
Yeah, we anticipate long-term buildout, I think we are assuming over the course of about 20 years in terms of the analytical assumptions, but depends on market conditions as is also spelled out in the specific plan.
And you talked about the stuff that was not mitigated, mitigated. When you do these reports, it's about the same, correct? I mean, you're going to come across the majority of that stuff within the Central Valley if somebody's trying to do some building.
That's perfect characterization, not any kind of significant avoidable effects that you wouldn't anticipate in any similarly situated, similarly sized project. I think that's accurate.
Thanks. Well, you know, I have some questions on this thing. I had turned around and looked at this, and this is all west of the junior high school, okay, which is Caesar Chavez. And the lot size, and there's the driving force behind this is individuals that own the largest portions of the properties. So with that, on the north side, there's anticipation down the future total buildout of the possibility of Lunar Drive being cut off for turning, you know, north or turning into the thing from going east and north and from the people that are coming south and them turning east. Are those residents aware of this project and how it's going to affect them at total buildout?
So, I'll answer that question, Councilman Klein. Are residents aware? Yes, they're aware, they were sent a notice, just like the folks that live within the annexation, that they can attend these meetings. You're referring to a median being placed, I think that that's at full buildout. Once that happens, and Toby, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the signal would be fully operational at Booth Road, so they would still have access from doing either U-turn or finding another avenue to get to that subdivision.
Okay, so, because when I read it, I didn't interpret it as a medium, I interpreted it as Lunar was going to be basically a sidewalk right there and people couldn't get through there.
No, no. Lunar will still be open.
Okay, okay, so the interpretation for me was incorrect.
The road connection would still be there, right in and right out at Lunar would be, you just wouldn't be able to make the lefts.
And with the other properties that are affected in this site, how do they feel about this? Are they, you know, are they signing on board or how does this...
So with the annexation application, the project proponent got signatures from the folks that lived within the annexation area. We have, staff has talked to, independent of, the consultant staff has talked to a couple other property owners out there that are interested to see this project annexed so that they can have some future development rights. They were not interested in participating financially, the Alverneses were the only ones that were. So they're the sole reason that they're the singular project proponent, but there are folks in the area that want to develop their property some point in time.
Okay. Is there anybody else in the council that has questions? Then I'm going to open up to the public. So anybody in the public that has any questions or comments on this item number nine, the Whitmore Ranch specific plan, please come forward.
Patricia Cousins, 38, 31, 38, 41, 38, 65, Roding Road, continuing my opposition to the Whitmore Unranch project. I want to thank Planning Commissioner Cooper Condon for his comments and vote at the last Planning Commission meeting. I would say that Mr. Brant's comments about the trashy nature of the town, I don't know how your plan addresses that issue, but it's just more trash that you want to generate, it seems to me. I want to read what my sister sent in preface to her statement. I appreciate the transparent way in which the topic of Whitmore Ranch plan has been presented. Upon reviewing the notes from that meeting, I am disappointed that the Planning Commission has chosen not to build in any protective measures for the citizens of Ceres or people like us, unfranchised, or those to ultimately live in this development. Perhaps this is not their job and is left up to the council to do so. I encourage you to consider my perspective and experience in which the future may well not develop as envisioned and that the ultimate impact of this proposed plan will have negative impacts that are being glossed over. If you don't take responsibility for holding developers to the city's stated goals, who does? Surely you have the power to place conditions on the recommended resolutions and also the power to send the development back to the west side, which you already, with great foresight, annexed. I want to say again that I think your city seal should be shrouded because the City Ranch project, I mean the ranch, Whitmore Ranch project just mocks that city seal. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment on this?
I have a question. You said you had signatures from all the, everyone 100%? Do you have one specifically for 3318 Whitmore Ranch, Whitmore Avenue, excuse me?
Is that Mr. Campbell?
Yeah.
Yes.
He never signed anything to annex into the city, so...
We have a signature on the application, so I don't know where it came from.
Ken, is there a way to review that or...
At this point, it's the signature on the application, we move forward with it, so...
How was the application delivered? Or how was it, how did you get this signature?
I guess the project proponent, so if you're just simply stating that you don't want to be a part of the city limits, is that simply all you're saying?
Well, my grandpa doesn't know, it's his property. I thought it was funny because he wasn't aware that there was a signature on his behalf.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to provide that to you, you don't have it with me at this moment, but I can certainly get that to you.
Yeah, well, how does, is he, I mean, is this a done deal now or what? Because you have this...
This is just a consideration. He still has, if there's more than 12 registered voters, which I believe there are, when this goes to LAFCO, he can have a vote in the LAFCO process whether he wants to be annexed or not.
Okay.
So this is just the consideration of the annexation.
Just a consideration, it's not, that's nice, okay.
It's not finalized and reorganization doesn't happen until LAFCO approves it.
Okay.
So at that point in time, the property owners within the specific plan that are registered voters will get to vote.
Got it, thank you. And then as far as the zoning is concerned inside, that's just a proposal, right? I mean, you could change high density, low density, maybe even commercial as well?
No, the land uses proposed are the land uses that would be considered for adoption.
So as soon as everything's in stone after that?
At least it'll be adopted at that point in time. If it changed at some future point, that could be a consideration, but with the action that's before the city council tonight, what you've seen on the screen is what would be adopted.
Okay, but you do have the ability to change it if...
The council and any property owner can desire to do that at some future time. Don't know how that would be received, depending upon when it is...
Right, but it's a possibility, right? That's all I'm saying.
Correct, everything's a possibility.
But to clarify as well, the use doesn't change until the property owner wants to change it. So if the existing use, for example, your grandfather's home, which is a single family home, is zoned for high density, it doesn't change until that property owner desires to change it to high density. This planning effort doesn't change the actual use until that property owner moves forward to change that use.
Got it.
I just want to clarify, because there's a clear distinction between a planning document, which is what this is, and the actual use of the property.
Right, right, okay.
So if your grandfather desires to keep his single family home for the future, that's his prerogative, there's no requirement to change anything.
Okay, and then as far as the sewage was concerned, he was, he was talking about state of the art sewage, like, is there a detailed plan on that? Or is there something a little, you know, I didn't really see that on any of the documents.
In the specific plan, there's a detail that shows how the sewer will be provided.
And that's on the website?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Good evening, members. My name's Jeannie Knox, I live at 4455 Roding Road, Ceres, California, and my family has been here for decades. There's a time and place for homes and agriculture, and you need the agriculture to feed the residents. The more we push out into ag land, the harder it is to provide local, well-grown, quality food for those residents. And as, if you add this expansion into this area, anyone farming nearby, it's harder for them to put to dust their trees, whatever their crop, because of the impact of, it's bad enough with the school, it's already impacting when, where, and how a farmer can do what he needs to do to grow his crop, to handle his weeds and all the rest of that. You're putting a heck of a lot of pressure on Whitmore Road by adding, what is it, almost 1,000 homes into that area? If the ranch goes through along with that apartment complex, that's a heck of a lot of traffic up in that area. Are we really ready for that? I would prefer to see expansion west of Ceres in the pockets that we've, that has already been discussed by it. And one other comment, it talks about, that previous speaker spoke about the trash. Every human being is responsible for their own actions, and if they want to live in a nice area, they need to police themselves and they need to care about it. And if you care about something, you also need to vote and be responsible to do that. Don't complain if you haven't voted. Thank you.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Klein, members of the city council. My name's Dave Romano, it's a great pleasure to be before you this evening. I'm here representing the Alvernes family. I've had the good pleasure of working in the Ceres community for a number of years, worked on a number of different projects. This is actually a great project. I can tell you that your staff has assembled a really quality team to put this together. AECOM is a very well-recognized planning firm, Odell Engineering, who did the engineering, and Ken Anderson, who did the traffic work. They've prepared adequate and acceptable documents and the project is ready to proceed. As your planning director mentioned to you, this project's been years in the making. It was actually in the general plan when we developed the East Gate project back in 1997, and at that time, there was actually discussion of putting that elementary school site within the East Gate project. That's kind of where we expected it was going to go, but the school district decided to move across the street, which is their right, and they constructed Caesar Chavez and La Rosa Elementary Schools on the south side of Whitmore in an area that's always been planned for residential development. And in fact, they created this little sliver of about 58 acres of property on the south side of Whitmore between Moore Road and the school site that really is kind of crying out for development. The school would not have gone down there if they were expecting to be next to a land use that wasn't residential. And so this project kind of helps fill that little infill area. It also gives the opportunity to develop the south side of Whitmore Avenue, so it looks more finished, kids can walk on the north and south side of the road, put a traffic signal in at Booth, and really just interconnect the community. It's a wonderful plan, as you can see, that's kind of walkable and connect... It's a wonderful plan, as you can see, that's kind of walkable and connectable. So the Alvernes family funded this process entirely, they own a 20-acre piece of property. 20 acres is the largest piece of property in this annexation area. It's not an area made up of large farming properties, it's a 20-acre piece, a couple of 10-acre pieces, and some smaller pieces of property. In this process, we had the opportunity to start communications with the school district. I got involved, I've been able to work through with them a number of mitigation agreements on other projects. We've worked diligently with them over the last few weeks to put a mitigation agreement in place. The Alverneses have agreed to that agreement. It has to do with some additional funding and some timing of some improvements, because on the west side of the school district, Esmar Avenue is not complete. And so with the first phase of this project, we'll actually complete Esmar down to Stanford and a piece of Stanford Avenue, which is on the south side of the project, to create additional interconnectivity with those schools that we think will be beneficial, and the school district agrees as well. So we're very appreciative of Mr. Pannagrazio's time, of Mr. Siegel's time, of their council's time, working with us to put that agreement in place. I know you have a letter from the school district, that's just kind of a legal preservation of rights, clearly Mr. Pannagrazio is here, can speak to that, but basically, we have an agreement in place, which is typical with annexation projects, and we're very appreciative of all the school district's time and effort in helping us put that together. So with that, I do also want to let the council know that when we started our dialogue with the school district, getting Esmar and that piece of Stanford in, we could tell that that was important to them. And so we reached out to our neighbors, the Gadies, who own the 10 acres next to us, next to the Alvernes piece, and they actually stated that they would be willing to work with us to help us get some right-of-way to build some of that circulation early on, even if they weren't quite ready to develop. So we've really been thankful for our neighbors, we've been thankful for your staff in this process, and the efforts that we've put together with the school district. This is a process that is now complete and ready to move forward. It's not a big project. Councilman Drossit, you asked about timing. A couple hundred residential units theoretically, two to three to four years, it's not a big absorption process. There are some smaller areas, there is a high-density area that could have an apartment complex, and sometimes those take a little bit longer, so I don't know if 20 years is a long time, it's not going to be a year or two. The market is constrained right now, and housing is difficult to provide, and in areas where services are available and access is easy to get, this is an area that we're hopeful that would be able to get developing relatively quickly, get Whitmore finished, get that in, and put some of those improvements in that will make circulation a little better in the area. So I'm thankful for my clients kind of taking this on, this is a big ask for 20 acres to take on a project of this magnitude, but the Alvernes family did it, they stuck to it over the last two years to get it to this point, and we concur with your Planning Commission's recommendation to you for approval, we confer with, concur with your staff's recommendation, we ask for approval, we're here to answer any questions. So thank you very much.
Any questions? None.
My name is Dan Pannagrazio, I'm the Assistant Superintendent of Business Services with Ceres Unified, here to speak on behalf of Ceres Unified tonight. So I think those are all fair and accurate statements from Mr. Romano, so I say at this time, we concur completely with that, in terms of where we are in this process. So as you know, the district's concerns primarily have been about added traffic to the area with Caesar Chavez and La Rosa, with such close proximity to the, to the plan. But the mitigation agreement that we have worked very diligently towards, particularly the past couple of weeks, is a day or two away from being signed. Absolutely no concerns that, about that agreement, whether or not it will be signed, we've agreed on all aspects, that we have been negotiating, as I said, particularly over the past couple of weeks. Technically speaking, the reason for the letter is to have that prudent legal standing if by some chance, something were to go awry prior to us taking the item to our Board of Trustees on December 13th, which is our next board meeting. If the timing had worked differently, then we'd have a deal already signed tonight, and there'd be no, essentially no purpose for any further letter to have our concerns still stand. So we expect to continue to work, we've been working every day on this, and I just want to thank the city, and I want to thank Dave Romano and the Alvernes family for working through the concerns that we've had, and I think we've come to a fair and reasonable agreement for both sides. And as I said, December 13th, we'll bring the mitigation agreement officially to the board for their approval of the mitigation agreement. Any questions from me?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the council that would like to, I mean, in the audience that would like to address the city council? Well, seeing none, and I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the city council for comments or any action. Anybody on the city council have any comments or anything that they would like to stay?
I do.
Councilmember Rhino?
Mr. Westbrook, on the specific plan, the LDR is for a minimum lot size of 5,000, correct?
That is correct.
And the medium density is 3,000?
Correct.
Okay, so then if I go back to the minutes from the October 24th, 2016, meeting in which we were just discussing conceptually the plan, we didn't make any real findings or anything, but Councilmember Lane stated he wanted to see at least 6,200 square feet, and I believe the mayor also wanted to see a larger lot, so I'm wondering why it didn't come back with larger lots, why it's still a minimum. I know that they could build it bigger, but if it's approved at a minimum of 5,000, why would they do that?
It's going to kind of be up to market demand. The reason that we went with the little smaller lot sizes was to be conservative on the environmental impact analysis. So the environmental impact report shows up to a maximum of 441 units that could be developed. Anything less than that is perfectly acceptable, anything more than that wouldn't work because it hadn't been analyzed. Simply going with the larger lots would have dropped the yield count. If there had been some change in density requirements to the state, then we could have gotten into a circumstance where we're actually proposing more units and then we're actually analyzed. And so that's why we use the 5,000-square-foot lot sizes.
The R1 zone, is that still 6,200 square feet?
Currently today, it's 6,200 square feet, as the council's aware, the staff is in the process of doing a zoning code update where we'll analyze lot sizes.
Okay, personally, I just can't even imagine another subdivision where you have a lot size of 5,000 square feet. That's just, me personally, I think in this day and age, we have so many neighbors that can't seem to get along with each other, and it's like, you're going to even cram them in even closer than, say, in an old neighborhood like I live in. I, I don't want to see such a small lot. My other concern is the traffic on Whitmore. How will that be alleviated? Because now, between, say, the freeway and, well, all the way out to the schools, traffic backs up unbelievably. How is that going to be mitigated when you're going to add all of these houses?
One of the things that it does, when you look at it, when you just simply look at that, it makes total sense. If I add more people, I'm going to have more traffic. What'll happen is, the roadway will be completely finished off with curb gutter and sidewalk along the south side of Whitmore Avenue. In addition to that, there'll be a signal at Booth Road, kind of in-between and just west of Caesar Chavez Elementary a little bit, but as the project develops, there'll be more ways for parents to drop off and pick up their kids, because they can utilize the adjacent subdivision that will now be there. Today, no subdivision exists, so the only thing that those parents can do is queue or wait on the north side of Whitmore Avenue in the East Gate area if they were trying to drop off or pick up their kids. With the development of this subdivision, there'll be more avenues to get to and from the school sites.
But it isn't just going to the school sites, it's heading westbound to get onto the freeway, and maybe people will go south on Mitchell to get on the freeway, which is overcrowded, but I'm talking about Whitmore west of Mitchell is, it's unbelievable how bad traffic is. It's just bumper to bumper, it really is, and I don't, I just can't imagine that the people that potentially would live here are not going to be going westbound on Whitmore. And the only way I would see that we could even take care of that would be if you widened Whitmore again, and that isn't going to happen. I just think we're adding to the traffic problems we already have. And then my other concern is the parks, that I know when East Gate was developed, that there was supposed to be a park there, and it still hasn't been developed, and people still complain about that, and I understand from Mr. Wells that this is a lineal park, and so, say, the Alverneses developed that middle portion, then they would be conditioned to put that portion of the park in at that time?
Yes.
And where would that be conditioned?
The subdivision map.
The subdivision map. And my other concern is the amount that they will be paying into the CFD, I don't believe that that's going to cover the cost of the police protection, fire protection, or maintaining that park, because as you know, and we've talked about many times, we cannot maintain the parks we have now, so how are we going to maintain, even if it's just five acres or something, how are we going to maintain that? Those are my concerns.
Do you want to respond, those are concerns, or wasn't a question?
No, those are concerns, and you can take them as a concern or a question, but those are concerns.
So to get to a couple things, one, on the traffic side of things, Whitmore, in terms of the traffic study for both this project, which was analyzed specifically project, the existing project plus with this project, and anywhere where the level of service, LOS as we refer to in the engineering side, anywhere where that level of service falls below our adopted standard in the general plan, there's mitigation identified, and most cases, our public facilities fee, the overall fee program identifies those improvements, but for Whitmore Avenue specifically, that roadway is operating at the level of service to meet the general plan requirements. So it is, people's measurement of congestion or delay, it is well below accepted levels across the industry. So from a traffic perspective, the increased volume associated with this is consistent with our general plan. So on the parks issue for East Gate, we are in design on the East Gate park, as we've discussed at this council numerous times, the maintenance of the parks has been our challenge, and building new parks that you can't maintain is always a challenge, but as we've been able to add staff this past year, and we anticipate being able to do that in the future, and that's when you start to add those facilities back in. The CFD is done on purpose, in accordance with this environmental impact report, to mitigate the impacts of the new development, and that CFD and the numbers are appropriate and consistent with assuming that the development pays its proportionate fair share of the impact of this development. That's, that's the finding of this document, and that's what the council's asked to find, is that the impacts associated with the new development are fully mitigated by this document.
Thank you for that, but if you had council members two years ago say they wanted the lot sizes bigger, then why did they come back still with the minimum of 5,000?
So one of the key changes that happened after that meeting on the 16th, the outcome of that meeting was the allocation of two council members to a special meeting and special consideration, where they sat down and reviewed and revised that lot and configuration plan to come up with a land plan that was more efficient and more effective, so the outcome of that meeting and direction was the land plan that is in place now. So that was a key consideration that was done after that meeting in 2016.
So the two council members decided that they were okay with lower than 6,200?
They provided direction with the overall team to adjust that plan, to move forward with the plan that they felt was better than the original plan.
Thank you.
I know we've been working on this for quite a while, you know, I think the staff has done an outstanding job on the Whitmore plan. Obviously, it fits the general plan and what it's designed for, and I agree that the school district, the attorney that the school district would not have built two schools there if they thought for some reason that was never going to be developed. And there is really huge need right now to be able to get flow of traffic or whatever, people to and from, and I think that if you extend that all the way out, that's going to be a win-win for everybody there, and obviously, it might be a fairway for cars to be able to travel. It was in the general plan, I did read, since 1997, and, you know, this is not going to be built overnight, it's going to take some time, I truly believe, to actually get this thing done, but at the very end of the day, you know, I think everybody's done a good job of getting this going in the right direction, and, you know, it's just, it's going to be a win-win, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, comments, basically, I'm in favor of the project, first of all, I want to state that, so we don't have to waste a lot of time on that, but I do want to state regarding the 6,200-square-foot lots, I know that the whole plan, if I can remember correctly, Toby, that at that time, we talked a lot about flow and that sort of thing, and, you know, within the flow, we obviously had to change the plan, because we wanted the flow was different, if you remember at that time, when we first looked at it. So I think that's probably where these lots came in to play, because we had to do some different, do some different things with the roads and the, and the right-of-ways and all that sort of thing, I think that was all part of that, that you guys sat down and discussed, but, you know, and I don't know that that's even a bad thing now to have 5,000-square-foot lots, and I don't know, it could be 6,200, it could be 8,000, we don't know what this thing's going to ultimately end up as, but where it is right now, it's stating that, you know, they can put this many lots in, it could be less. And why I say maybe it's not a bad thing, people need to have a place to live, and I would think that, you know, smaller lots are going to make it a little bit more affordable for, for folks to buy homes possibly. You know, sometimes you, people can't afford things in this valley, and, and, you know, honestly, you know, they're always talking about affordable housing and that sort of thing, I don't expect the state of California to help us with any affordable housing. So what can we do in our community? You know, this might be one aspect, that maybe people can own and buy homes, maybe, maybe the prices will be a little bit less, I would hope so, but, but going, you know, so, so I'm not all hung up on the 6,200 square feet or the 5,000 at this point, I think ultimately, whatever the housing industry determines that's the need at that time is what's going to be built anyway. And, you know, it's basically the way, the way it always has gone for, you know, the 20 years that I've sat on the Planning Commission and council, it's, it's always been that way, so, it's determined by that. So with that said, you know, I think staff has done an excellent job, and I appreciate the school district and Mr. Romano getting together and, and working through this project and making it happen, because, you know, I know that, you know, when this was brought up with the school district about trying to get good flow, and, you know, I live by a school right now that, and the flow's horrible, that's going to take, it's the last one that's going to get fixed, right? But you know what, we're looking forward, we're moving ahead, you know, I look at the mistakes that we made here in Ceres on Whitmore Avenue, you know, we back up these duplexes on Whitmore Avenue to where we have no place to go, and all that stuff should have been turned the other way, so, you know, I really look, I think the foresight and the planning on this moving forward's a good thing, so I think the efforts were put into it, and so, with that said, and I think the public, the fees and that sort of thing, I think are probably as much as anybody or more than others are paying right now, if I'm not correct. So with that, I would have to support the project.
... Well, the problem with that is, is Caltrans, that's, that's the issue with Caltrans, you know, on that, that part right there, on and off ramps, onto the freeway, that's, that's, goes through a whole design concept and, and right-of-way and everything with Caltrans. So, you know, I wrestled with this the first time it came before us, and I supported So, you know, I wrestled with this the first time it came before us, and I supported the project. For the simple reason is, it is to the west of the schools. I look out here, and I look at East Gate, and I look at East Gate, how far it goes to the, to the east of the schools out towards Faith Home Road, and I wasn't a part of the city council back when that was approved, and, so I don't know what kind of opposition there was on that. Then I turn around and I look at, you know, you got Caesar Chavez School that was built, you got the other elementary school, I want to say La Rosa, and then you also have Whitmore Charter that was built a little bit to the south of that. And not aware of anything on the school board or going to a school board meeting, I don't know what kind of opposition it was there, what it was when it was in the county pockets, built within the county, just like Kay Beaver School. You know, I was one of the ones that got to sit with the developer and talk about flow and connectivity on the redesign and things, and I do understand Councilmember Rhino's concerns as far as lot size, but then I talked to, you know, city staff in the past, and you look at East Gate, and there was some issues with lot size there and as far as total coverage of the lot, and there's been some concessions made so people could patio covers up and really enjoy it where they don't have just an open backyard with no covering. So, you know, if this project was east of the schools, then I would, I would tell you right now, I would say definitely not. There's still trees out there, there's still farming out there, you know. The individuals that are taking this under, you know, own the largest portions of these properties. And to address the thing that, you know, that was, the citizens brought up about Mr. Campbell's product, property, that, you know, even if it is annexed into the city, until you sell it to a developer or anything like that, there's no changes to your property whatsoever. It would stay the same, and am I right in saying that, Mr. Westbrook?
The property use wouldn't change. The only, the difference is the widening of Whitmore, that we've been working with Mr. Campbell and his family for some time to facilitate the four-lane or five-lane facility. That would be the only impact to his project would be the improvements that are necessary. But we've been working with him for a couple of years now, and we do believe we're close to getting resolution.
Well, and we're working with safer routes to school, to put curb and guard.
We received a grant for those improvements.
Yeah, so, you know, that would be the only impacts that would be there, so the property would stay the same unless you decided to sell it to a developer and have something done. There would be no changes to your property. So, you know, with that being said, I'm sorry to disappoint a few people, but I can support this project, you know? And I think that, you know, being west of the school district and infilling, that's the proper use. You know, I have relatives that farm in Waterford, and they built a school right next to them, and they had peaches, and yet they had to turn around and work around their spraying and all this stuff because of the elementary school. And, you know, I know that the farmers on the east side of the school has the same issue. You know, they're going to have an issue with how they can farm and what they can spray and things like that. So, with that, I have no more comments. I'll bring you back to the council for any kind of action. Do we need to take these separately, or can we take them all at once?
The action can include all of these resolutions.
Correct. Okay, so.
Take them all together?
You can take them all together.
Okay, move for approval of item nine, A, B, C, and D.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Can I have a real call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
And Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Motion passes three, one, and one abstention or recusal from Mayor Viera due to a conflict.
Okay, and I will run out, and you go get the mayor?
Did he go to sleep out there? Item number 10, it's all yours.
Item number 10, new business, resolution number 2018-127. Approval of a purchase with Rosenbauer Fire Apparatus North America utilizing the Source Well Consortium, approving a loan from the sewer fund, authorize the finance director to execute a budget amendment to fund the purchase and authorize the city manager to sign the purchase documents. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Mayor. This item's a follow-up from an item that we had back in September 24th regarding the need to replace several of our aging fleet in our fire department. Number of pieces of equipment have not been replaced in a number of years. Last new purchase was in 2006. General rule of thumb is the replacement of moving a frontline piece of apparatus off of the main, off the frontline after 10 years and then 20 years total. We are well past that and are experiencing some significant failures in our apparatus on nearly a daily basis, and so it is well past time for the replacement of some of these apparatus. As we discussed last time, council had given the direction to move forward. This evening is the funding mechanism for making those purchases per council direction. So as we discussed last time, a couple of different options, and one, securing the bid process. So, a couple of options were, as is discussed in the staff report, doing a formal bid process or using the consortium pricing. Staff is recommending using that consortium pricing based on the experience that other agencies are finding. And then, to fund the purchase using that proposed source well and consortium pricing, looking at the options, we considered a third-party loan or lease. There's several arrangements out there where you can do a lease purchase or a lease to own, several different variations of that. And looking at the financing rates, Suzanne Dean did do some work there and got a quote of 3.88% would be the best rate that we could find from a company that specializes in this type of purchase and lease. Looking at our internal options, our sewer fund has a balance of about $13.9 million that is being accrued for future projects that are significant, but they're still a ways out from our timing and to be able to complete those. And so, by taking a loan from ourselves and our own fund, we were able to pay back that loan with the interest that it would otherwise earn. Ms. Dean has done a fantastic job in the investments of that money and is earning around 3% return on the investment of that sewer fund, so we can take a loan from ourself and repay it at the interest rate that we would otherwise earn. So that provides for the internal accounting, at the same time, the ability to pay that off sooner without any penalty or any other, any other problems with that particular loan, and allows us to have a little more flexibility in the overall process to hopefully pay that off sooner. So that is our recommendation this evening, to purchase the four vehicles that were identified there through an internal loan and authorize the finance director to make the budget amendment as necessary as an equity transfer, and for the city manager and myself to execute the purchase documents to move forward, available for any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions? I see Councilmember Rhino?
The $13.9 million, that's being accrued for large future projects that are a ways in the distance.
Yeah.
If we're talking about borrowing for 10 years from the sewer fund, then the projects you're talking about would not be within that 10-year period?
So there's several smaller projects that are, you know, in the million-dollar range that will need to happen over the course of the next five in accordance with our sewer master plan. The large construction of converting the overall plant, those are still probably at least 10 years out. So there will be expenditures in that fund, but it will continue to accrue a balance as well so that we can cash flow those projects. We're confident that we can cash flow those projects before there'll be the need for the $13 million.
So by taking the money out, we aren't going to jeopardize any projects that we normally would be doing?
Correct.
And how can we be sure that we pay it off in 10 years, we pay back our sewer fund, and that we don't kind of go, oh, gosh, we don't have the money now, so let's just push it out even further?
Well, as a debt against ourself, it would be reported on our financials every year, and so that is something that we've done in the past. It's not something we do on a regular basis, but that is reported on our financials and we, you know, that will show up as a debt to ourselves to ensure that that is repaid. Obviously, we hope to repay it sooner than that, but councils in the future, I don't, my crystal ball's not that good as to what happens in the future, but councils in the future would have the ability, if there's something changed, that you'd have that ability.
So that amount that we need to pay back every year would be a budgeted item?
Correct.
And you can be sure that you do point that out when we're talking about the budget, that we need to include it?
I don't believe Ms. Dean would allow me not to.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Klein?
Also in here, I see that there is additional cost of approximately $250,000 for such items as radios, hoses, extraction tools, ventilation fans, chainsaws, and tools, excuse me, since the equipment we have now will be obsolete. And where's that money coming from?
That will be budgeted next year. We would suspect that we'd be able to use a funding mechanism, a combination of general fund and Measure H. Measure H committee meeting is tomorrow evening, and we do want to discuss that with them tomorrow evening, looking at that. It will be in next year's budget, because the apparatus replacement, long lead item, takes about a year for that to come in, so we would need to budget for those pieces of equipment for next year's budget, for fiscal year 1920.
And, in, sort of in lines with Councilmember Rhino's comment, question, you know, we're going to borrow this, borrow this money for a 10-year period, what can we do for future budgets to have apparatus replacement costs put aside, you know, for future? I know all other departments within the city has that, but the fire department is one that was taken out years ago before I got on the city council, so how can we put that back in there and pay the fund back at the same time?
That would be quite difficult, because you're, in essence, doubling up that effort. That will be, it's a budget question every year as to whether it can fit, and we would wrestle with that. You know, basically, you'd be double, call it double-dipping, per se, you'd be putting away twice the amount, paying for one purchase while trying to save for the next purchase. That would be a significant challenge.
And with replacing four of the fire apparatuses, you know, the two engines, the ladder truck and the bush, the bush truck, after that, when is the next piece of apparatus earmarked or need to be replaced?
My crystal ball's not that good either. I would, I would suspect we're probably at least a good five years out before we would look at that, but as part of that apparatus plan, we were forecasting that in that timeframe.
So with the next fiscal budget, is there any way that we can have a discussion about replacement costs for those vehicles? You know, because, like I say, all other departments have funds set aside?
Of course, that's a conversation every year. Unfortunately, we haven't had the budget to do that in any of the past four years, but this is the first budget where we had a positive budget, net, you know, revenues exceeding expenses. That is a conversation we have every year.
Okay. Any more questions?
No.
Any other questions? At this time, I'll open it up to the audience. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Okay. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for either further discussion or direction. Move to approve resolution 2018-127.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember DeRocette?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
And Mayor Viera?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
Thank you. We have no discussion items this evening. Councilmember referrals? Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda? Okay, hearing none. We will move to reports. I have nothing to report, other than I caught up on all my emails out there, so I'm good. Councilmember Rhino?
I have a question for the city manager. With other countries now not being willing to buy cardboard and other products, is that going to affect our recycling? I know that we do have a jurisdiction not far from us that is totally, they might as well just do away with recycling because of what they will be limiting their residents from putting into their blue can, because their provider, whoever, whoever they were getting or selling the recycled items to will no longer take them because they can't offload them to other countries that were paying for it. Are we, are we looking at that same issue?
Yeah, that's something that's affecting all of California, so this is a, I know this is going to shock you, but this is a large disconnect between the state government and their focus on reducing solid waste and increasing recycling, but without any connectivity to the real world. And all of California's goals and objectives for recyclable materials has been 100% dependent on other markets, i.e. China and other places, taking those products, and that market has come to nearly a standstill. So, pretty much every waste hauler in California is wrestling with what to do with those products. And so this is an ongoing conversation between ourselves and Bertolati and the state. We get nasty grams from the state of how we're not meeting their goals, but at the same time, when the haulers don't have any place to dispose of these plastics and recyclables, we're at somewhat of a challenge. So this is an issue that is going to come up. We're not quite there yet to make any drastic change, but we are continuing to do what we can to try and see what the solutions are. But as it stands right now, we don't see any good solutions, but it is an ongoing issue that's likely resolved at the state local level, with some, something's got to give at some point here in the future. But it's not imminent for a change here, but it is something that is on the radar screen for sure.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lane?
Nothing.
Councilmember DeRocette?
Nothing.
Ms. Dean? Counsel? Anything?
Nope.
Mr. Wells?
As I mentioned, Measure H committee meeting tomorrow evening at 6:00 here in this building, so the public's welcome to attend. Just a reminder, happy Thanksgiving, that's next week. I know it's hard to believe for all of us that it's already that time of the year. City Hall will be closed Thursday and Friday, and we'll be back on Monday for the next council meeting.
Thanksgiving weekend for next?
Next week.
Yeah, I had that same comment.
Aren't you in the grocery business?
Yeah. I thought this week would be really busy for you, Councilmember Klein.
All right. Mr. Westbrook?
Just wanted to mention that the Chamber of Commerce is going to have a wine tasting event at their offices November 29th from 5:30 to 9:00 p.m. They're going to have some local winery, so if you're interested, contact the chamber.
Okay. Mr. Smith? Mr. Collins? Mr. Scola?
Nothing.
I don't see Supervisor DiMartini. So at this point, we will adjourn the regular meeting, and we will move to closed session. We have two items, conference with real proper negotiator on both of those. After that, we will report out from closed session, I believe, and then we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be Monday, November 26th, 2018. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
I'm sorry.
Goodbye.
I reminded you.